All right, so that brings us to item 22.
Mayor Pro Tem, council members, Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager, and here for another drought update. Be going over the final rainfall totals, community conservation efforts, water supply strategy, water, recycled water status update, lake and reservoir operations, drought response capital project highlights, a quick summary of the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan and our water conservation program. So rainfall totals, we ended the year just above half of normal, which was certainly a far cry from where we hoped to end. Gibraltar with little over 13 inches of rain. Normally, we see 26, 27 inches of rainfall in the backcountry. And as we talked about in past meetings, we were so close. Like, that water should have just gotten to the point where it was, it was starting to get saturated. Had we seen a three or four inch rain event, we could have seen a couple hundred, if not 1,000 acre feet of runoff. So it was terribly disappointing where we, where it just stopped. Looking at the state, certainly, we are the epicenter of this drought right now. If you look at the dark red, which is the exceptional drought situation, certainly, things in Northern California have improved. But to note, they did get average rainfall this year. That's what Northern California ended up getting. It certainly has helped. It certainly eased the prices for us purchasing water this year and has allowed us to have a healthy reserve of water now in San Luis Reservoir for delivery. Community conservation continues to be a very positive situation with 41% conservation for April. Continues to be, I mean, something this, this community can be very proud of. It really has, and our, the amount of regulations we've had to implement have been very light. And I think people have found ways to conserve in their own way, and it's certainly been extremely helpful. I did, because this is for the month of April, we were just getting in numbers. I wanted to have something for you. Roughly, May's conservation is somewhere around 40%. We still have to go through and subtract out some of the overlap agreements that we have where we deliver water to others. But it's going to be very close to that. So where are we cumulatively since declaring a stage three with a solid 35% cumulative average? It's been a while since we looked at this graphic. It's something I show to the Water Commission on a monthly basis. This is our gallons per capita per day. And I think it's got some helpful information in it. It, our target, this red line here, is the state requirement by the year 2020 to achieve 117 gallons per capita per day. That was our goal for the community. We, as you can see with this blue line, we're currently averaging, our 12-month average is 86. So we have gone way beyond what our 20 by 20 goal was. And then what you can see down here, this is part of our reporting to the state. We hover just over 50 gallons per capita per day is what our residential customers are using, which is just spectacular. The state considers 55 gallons per capita per day to be basic health and safety needs. So I, on every single measure, I feel like the community is, is continuing to, to do a fantastic job. Our water supply strategy, not much to note here from past months. What, what you will see in the next update is we just got confirmation today. And I kind of wanted to wait off until we got that confirmation of the purchase of the 4,000 acre feet from AVEC. And so what we're, what you'll see, that supplemental water, we're going to put that into our supply strategy. And based on some recent discussions as of yesterday with the state, we're going to be pushing out our planning horizon three years. They want to see what our water supply plan looks out. So it will be adding 2019 on to here and what that looks like. So that'll be in our next update that we see. But clearly, just summarizing, you can see that DSAL coming online in October timeframe is going to be, play a very critical role next year in helping us to meet demand along with the need for conservation. Supply management, just recapping, we did receive a 60% final state water allocation, which is roughly just shy of 2,000 acre feet. We completed a purchase of about 4,000 acre feet of, of AVEC water. So this is our, our war chest of water that we're building up. And certainly, it's, it's part of the deliveries for next year and the following. As we've talked about in the past, conveyance is really the limitation. We can only move so much water through the state water pipeline. But things have been improving in the sense that we've been able to utilize other water agencies' capacity. We, I think we'd been, want to be forthcoming with, that was one of the risks of whether we were going to need to implement additional conservation measures. But so far, we've been successful. Montecito and Carpinteria have been utilizing their either lake storage or groundwater storage and have not been taking advantage of deliveries to the lake. So we've been able to, along with Galita, take advantage of that. And that is helping our position going into the late summer when we expected to see a potential shortage. And so we'll continue to bring that to your attention and continue to monitor that. But at this time, we don't anticipate needing additional short-term regulations.
Mr. Hagmark, on, on that front, there, there's been conversation about some additional conveyance opportunities to expand the ability to, to bring water into Kachuma. Can you give us a, a word on how that's going?
Yes.
Any progress there?
Absolutely, Mayor Pro Tem. We've been working closely with CCWA, Central Coast Water Authority, to see what we could do to increase those deliveries. And the easy one was typically in November, they shut down the system in order to do maintenance. And they're, they feel like we can get through another year without doing that maintenance. So we're going to be deferring it. But that allows us to deliver several hundred acre feet of additional water in November, which was critical. And along with that, they are making some modifications to the piping coming in and over the dam. And so we'll be able to boost production by a couple cubic feet per second, which adds a couple acre feet a day to the lake. All those little things kind of adding up. I believe the price tag for all the little modifications they were making was like 180,000. And ultimately, will yield some significant deliveries to the lake. So we continue to push that system, sensitive to making sure that it continues to operate and it doesn't go down in some type of failure. That's one of the things we're very cognizant of. But yeah, we're working at this from multiple fronts. Thank you. Kachuma storage, so this is key. We, we, you'll see in some later graphics I have that we're starting to build up a surplus of state or imported water in Kachuma. And that's going to be really critical to helping us meet our demands come late summer. So on the demand management side, it's really key that we continue to get that 35% conservation. I should update this. I said as of Monday, it kind of changed on me here. We do see not new regulations, but new requirements. We need to be doing our planning now for three years out. That's what the state came out with on Monday. And we have until June 22nd to share with the state how we plan to do that. So we're going to be putting those plans together. Fortunately, we've already been planning out two years, so we'll just be adding to that, that, that graphic. Regulations, we do not anticipate the need for new regulations. And as I mentioned earlier, we are not, we are kind of backing away from the, from the need for a short-term regulations right now. Certainly, we're keeping this in our back pocket. We're going to be watching this closely and reporting to council. But we feel like we will have at least a month or so ahead start if we start to see we're not, we're not able to keep deliveries or our conservation efforts are starting to fall short. So we feel pretty good about it at this time. Recycled water status update, just wanted to recap. The facility was designed to produce 2.5 million gallons a day. We had sustainable production at .75 MGD and lately have been getting it up to about 1 million gallons a day. Our goal for the summer is to get it up to 1.5 MGD. That would allow us to meet average summer demands, peak demands. We do plan to use the Valverde well, which produces about .2 MGD. But as it stands right now, we do not have enough production to meet demand. However, we've been talking with our water filtration expert that we brought on. And he is, and his firm are feeling very comfortable that by July, they can get the facility up to 1.5 MGD. And I will continue to be discussing this item. Certainly, if that's not the, the case by July, we'll be looking to ask our recycled water customers for conservation. Very keen to not put any potable water in our recycled water system this summer. And so trying to control that by demands. As far as Kachuma goes, we're at 14.5% of capacity. And there have been a lot of recent events that I wanted to bring to your attention. The grand jury report that came out pertaining to the operation of Lake Kachuma. And we will be, as many water agencies will be putting together a response. We have 90 days to respond to the recommendations in that. So our, our report is due by August 13th. And of course, that's going to come back to the full council for review and approval before we submit anything. We anticipate sometime in late July, we bring that back. Barge relocation is on track to be moved June 22nd to the 24th. You'll probably see a lot of media press about that. We're going to be trying to time that such that there's very little impact. We're very fortunate in Santa Barbara that we have Laurel Reservoir. It has about a week's worth of water on this side of the mountain and allows us to be a nice buffer. But we'll be working to help minimize the impacts of the shutdown to Galita, which is directly off the pipeline. And so they'll have to fill up all of their reservoirs. And then we're going to be assisting them through our connections that we have with them to make sure that their customers have adequate water during that shutdown. And then water releases for steelhead continues to be a real challenge. We support the Bureau's of Reclamations proposal to relocate the fish to a hatchery to ensure their survival. It's been really challenging. We are running out of water. And certainly, when they do the downstream release this summer, there will not be adequate water to deliver to, to Hilton Creek, which is where this population of steelhead that we've been trying to protect is at. And it's been very frustrating. There is a, a committee that's been put together to try and come up with solutions. And unfortunately, they're stymied. And it's been very frustrating. We certainly have invested a lot in, in protecting this species. And we certainly would hate to see them be stranded without water. And so we've been looking to try and find solutions. And unfortunately, right now, just running into challenges with the National Marine Fisheries being responsive to some of these concerns. They, they seem to be fine with not doing anything, which doesn't sit well with us. We really would like to do something to protect these fish.
Do you have any idea what number of fish we're talking about?
I, just several hundred.
It's 250 to 300. Would that be a ballpark number?
And the challenge is, we don't know how many of them are steelhead and how many of them are regular trout. Regular trout are not endangered. And the challenge is, it's, it's really only through genetic testing that they can actually figure that out. So I just wanted to run through, this is basically what remains in the lake. And what we have is this unallocated water. This is water that has either infiltrated into Teckalode Tunnel or has fallen via rainfall on the lake. And that water currently is being used to satisfy evaporation on the lake. And that, we expect to be exhausted by July. Carryover, this is the water that the member units have been able to save through conservation and other measures. And we expect this to be exhausted by October, late October. This blue line here is what is starting to grow is imported water. This is the water that is being banked in the lake, imported and saved in the lake. That little sliver right there is what remains of the fish water that we have. And that is expected to be exhausted sometime late this month. And we'll be looking to the Bureau as to where any additional water would be coming from. This BNA, ANA account, this is the downstream user water that is stored in the lake. They anticipate doing, releasing all of this water sometime late July, early August. And, and so we really are talking about the only remaining water being in there, the minimum pool and whatever imported water we can get into the lake. Just a little updated picture. This is our local resident, Bill Dewey, takes a lot of photos around town. Allowed us to use this picture he took. There's the intake tower. We're basically looking pretty much due south here. You can kind of see the, these dotted outline here. This is the location of the pipeline that they're putting in. Here's the current barge location. And here's where they're going to be moving the barge to. It's basically a deeper part of the lake. As for the DSAL project, it's, it is moving along. They're pouring, finishing pouring the footings for the three treatment units. You can see the, kind of the staged, this is one, two, and three. The treatment units are in transit. They've arrived at Long Beach and are being unloaded and, and stockpiled there and set up for delivery so they can put them on place. We have delivered one of those units. I have a picture of it. We're working on satisfying the permit conditions related to all the offshore work, making sure that there are conditions of anchoring plan. We had to basically do an assessment and make sure that there were no impacts to the marine environment out there. Contaminated soils is ongoing as it's, as we come across it. But at this point, it's a fairly minor element. And we're still on schedule for October. But there are a lot of concerns with the schedule. There are every, all the float in the schedule is gone. And there are some critical items related to electrical. And to kind of go into some more detail on that, the media that is used to filter out particulates in the water actually has to mature. It has to, we have to run water through it and actually get biological growth going on it. And in order for it to be effective. And so literally, we have to have power about two months prior to actually delivering water so that they can mature this media. And so it's really important that the electrical come online. And we're working closely with SCE, just making sure they understand this is a priority. And then, of course, the offshore work, making sure, we just recently, you know, have to do surveys on a regular basis. There was a grunion run. And so therefore, it limited what work activity could occur on, on shore. And so those kind of things could, could really play havoc if we continue to have, see grunion showing up. So here's just a little aerial photo showing the site. You can see the, the three skids here. Here is the, the first unit to show up. And I think they're just got it delivered. As you can see, seven of these make up one treatment train, and we have three of them. So basically, 21 of these units will show up on site. Basically, in the next month or so, they'll be showing up and putting them in place. This, just a nice aerial photo of the outfall box. It's basically where all the conduits, electrical come together and go out to sea. And, you know, the contractor has his protected fencing up. That black line is actually the dredge line. Has nothing to do with this project. But certainly, right there on the water, especially given all the erosion that occurred over the winter. The Montecito Water Sales Agreement, we have been in discussions with them about the funding agreement. They have a special board meeting this Friday to take up, take up the matter. And we'll see. At this point, they, going around in circles about the costs of doing this, some of the preliminary design work and some of the costs associated with negotiations. Hopefully, they'll get some clear direction from their board on Friday and, and we can figure out what the next steps are. The 2015 Urban Water Management Plan, we issued the drought, or the draft on April 29th and have discussed it at Water Commission on the 21st and 19th. And we have a public hearing scheduled here with council on June 28th. The Urban Water Management Plan is a requirement of the state every five years. And it's part of what feeds into the 2020 goal of 117 gallons per capita per day. For us, this is not our only planning document. This is really a more of a reporting document that, and it's pretty laid out by the state what you have to report on. For us, the long-term water supply plan is really our guiding planning document. It provides us the, the policy, the direction. And, but for some organizations, the Urban Water Management is all they do. And so I think it plays a much bigger role for them. But we see the Urban Water Management Plan ultimately is a snapshot that basically tells where we are now. We put a lot of time, staff time into that document. And if you hadn't had a chance to look at it, it's, it's a pretty good overview of everything that's going on. So the, just to touch on, since I mentioned the long-term water supply plan, we plan to update that. And the current plan is, as soon as this current drought ends, we want to reflect potential changes in operations of Kachuma and the safe yield there. We'll be reflecting the future role of DSAL, finishing our, our feasibility study of Potable Rios, how that plays into it. We expect the long-term water supply plan update to be a multi-year, probably two, good two years in the making and get plenty of public input on that document. So that's something that's, that's hanging out there. And, and we're ready to jump on as soon as this, this drought shows some relief. And at this time, I'm going to turn over to Ms. Ward, our Water Conservation Coordinator.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, my name's Madeline Ward. And I will share with you a few slides on our Waterwise High School video contest. This is an annual countywide program, and it's currently in its 17th year. All of the high schools in the county can participate. They, the high school students produce 30-second videos. And it's a great program because it's an opportunity for local students to showcase their creative filmmaking skills while also promoting wise water use. The videos are judged on originality, entertainment value, production quality, and value of information. And the winning videos are used as PSA ads in movie theaters. For the student prizes, we have sponsors that donate these for first, second, third, the People's Choice Award, and the Honorable Mention. This year, our corporate sponsors for the students were Ramada Santa Barbara, True Nature Landscape Architecture, Ewing Irrigation, All Around Landscape Supply, and NCM Movie Theaters. And this year, we had our best year yet. We had 22 videos that were entered. And this theme, since we announced it in the fall, we weren't sure if we were going to get rain or shine. So this, the theme this year was water conservation in the forecast, how to be waterwise outside, rain or shine. We got a lot of great videos. They're very fun to watch. And our People's Choice Award was also via Facebook in terms of watching them on Facebook and liking the, the winning videos. And if all goes according to plan, we should be able to watch our first place video here. Okay, unfortunately, I wish Joshua and I could act it out, but it's a cartoon. We tried it once about an hour ago, and we were hoping it would last long enough for us to be able to watch it. But we'll have to fix that for the future. So the winning video was Carpinteria High School. Second place was Dunn School and Santa Barbara High won third place. And we do have it on our website if you do want to watch any of the winning videos. And we're here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Mr. Raff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, first of all, like to make a comment about the communication from staff and obviously, the results of the community. It's been, it's outstanding and a big congratulations to a community that doesn't need to be beat up any further by regulation. They are doing the job. They're doing a certain amount of esprit de corps, which I think is something that we can, we can truly appreciate from this, this end going forward. I did have a request, Mr. Hagmark, just about because it's a, it's a question that comes up constantly because everybody sees the development of construction around us. And I know you've brought it up before. Could you give just a quick synopsis of the water budget and the percentage that the new development that is in the pipeline or underway causes in the water budget itself? Because it is something that's on everybody's mind because they're going by these countless huge construction projects from all the way out at the end of Hollister to here downtown on the waterfront. And it's, it's a concern, but it's hard to, to express what that means in the big picture. Could you give us just a very quick synopsis on that, please?
So we, we have a spectrum of, of our commercial, sorry, of development coming online. And it's been anywhere from six acre feet to 40 acre feet. And lately, it's been in that 20 acre feet range is what new development is bringing on. We use about 10,000 acre feet a year. So it makes up a very, very small percent of our overall supply and doesn't really play a big difference in how we move forward. But, but as we've discussed, there's certainly a lot of, of, there's a lot of jobs surrounding it. And if it doesn't change the way that we do our water supply planning, it seems, it seems challenging to, to, to stop it.
And that includes all the, all the hotel rooms coming online and all the other things we see that are coming up out of the ground? That's in the, those are in the numbers that you're talking about?
That's correct. And, and that assumes a pretty worst-case scenario when we, we assume every fixture and every hotel and everything is operating. And, and certainly, as we know, that's, it's typically not that much water is used. And what we find with most of the new developments is they're required to have the latest in water conservation fixtures. And so typically, if they're tearing down, it depends on what they're replacing. But in some cases, they're actually using less water than what the previous tenant was using. And so those, those upgrades can be really beneficial. They're really limited on what kind of landscaping they can have. So development for us is, is a much different situation than what Galita has, where they have, you know, open land that's being developed. And there has been no, you know, significant use there before. We're just, it's, it's a very different situation here related to that.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez, did you have a question?
I have a question, but, but just to follow up on that. I guess one of the things that complicates that discussion is the additional water costs a lot more than the water we've used in the past. So even though some of the new development uses a lot less water because it's more efficient, it still shows up on the chart because it's a lot more expensive, almost by a factor of 10 in some cases. So I think that's, that's important to keep in mind, too. Not all water has equal prices and is equally available. The question I had was regarding the number, let's see, which slide was it?
Can I add one more of what we were looking for your question?
Sure.
Our long-term water supply plan contemplated growth in this community. And despite planned growth that we found in our general plan, we anticipated over the next 20 years to actually reduce our water needs. And that was based on conservation, the implementation of more energy-efficient, water-efficient devices. So despite the growth that you see going on, the, we still anticipate that in 20 years, our water usage will be less than what it was going into this current drought.
And that's good news. There's some things we're working on that hopefully will hit the agenda sooner rather than later, which would allow our current residents to upgrade their toilets, do graywater conversions. It's a financing mechanism for them. So hopefully, we can get that through the system so that people can upgrade their equipment. So the question was, you mentioned with the recycled water, we're looking at .75, and then it may boost up to 1. And then the goal for the summer is 1.5 MGD. And then you will consider 20 to 35% voluntary reduction if the goal can't be achieved. So if we're meeting the need now, does this change in the peak period because their usage goes up or because other people's conservation doesn't go down?
It's because demand goes up. It follows the landscape needs. I mean, that's, that's the thing we could, with a million gallons a day, we could provide most of the water needs, recycled water needs for most of the year. But when we have those peak demands, we can't store recycled water. I mean, we have reservoirs, but they're relatively small. It's not like we can have a, a lake that we can put this water in. And so it's, we, we do run into these times. And that's why the facility was sized like it was, is to be able to handle this July, August, September peak demand when everybody is irrigating and wants water, recycled water at the same time. And so that's what we're trying to gear up for. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we haven't been able to, to prove the system will, will get there. So that's, that's exactly what we hope to, we're making some. So, that's exactly what we hope to, we're making some tweaks to it, and we hope to get to that level by July.
Okay. And then, the other half of that is, on the demand management, temporary regulations restricting water use could entail limitations on outdoor water use and methods of irrigation. How much, what percentage would that be? If you could estimate, is that like in the 10% range? Or what more can you eke out of the system in that line item?
Well, see, we're discussing that internally, which is, it'll be based on the shortage that we identify. And that's been part of the challenge with that. We'd want to come back and be surgical about that. If we just need, you know, six weeks of, and we need to free up 500 acre feet of water, you know, that, for example, then we can take that in and start looking at some of the conservation efforts that, and maybe just limiting sprinkler use for that six weeks would be enough to save that 500 acre feet that we need to save. So, those are the, at this point, we haven't identified a shortage. And that's what we want to, if we can, we certainly want to, don't want to do it. And so, we just want to make sure that the council and the community is aware that potentially, that could happen if we see a change in our situation.
And what's your forecast on how much we could save if the need became really pressing?
Well, we went through that a few months ago. I don't think we'd be looking to do any type of outdoor watering ban. That isn't where we'd want to go. I think we'd be looking to try and match up the conservation with what our shortage is looking to be, not try and take it any further than we need it to go. But we have a lot of tools in our toolbox that we can take to, and we'll bring those forth to the council and with our recommendation.
Because I know the slide you showed that showed how much we have conserved is pretty amazing, 41% reduction in April. And in the summertime, according to this chart, this is page seven, the, both our actual usage and the drought target expand. And I'm assuming that's just because irrigation needs and household needs go up a little bit because of the heat. So, is the idea that we could keep this red line relatively flat if we needed to? And so, maybe eke out, you were talking about 500 acre feet?
I just threw that out as, I don't know what our shortage is going to be, but it, that could be some reasonable target that we'd be looking for. And again, our, all our planning is based on that blue line here, which is a 35% conservation. So, presumably, if we're in that area and we're able to deliver the water that we need, we don't anticipate that shortage. But certainly, there is a seasonality effect to it, and that's what we're going to be watching. Once we feel like we get through October, then we'll be looking ahead to next summer and meeting those peak demands if we don't see any rainfall.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Maria? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hart?
Oh. Well, I'm starting to get a little bit concerned that everybody's doing too good a job on conservation. I mean, they can't really say that seriously, but from an economic standpoint, it is a real concern. We were projected to be saving financially. The model works on the 35% conservation target. If we're at 40% now, is it your sense that this 40% has to do with just the weather? It's been, you know, luckily cooler than it was last year at the same time of year. But I think there will be additional conservation when the rates kick in. And so, are we getting in a potential situation where we have, from a financial standpoint, too much conservation that requires us to revisit the rates and increase them and get into that kind of cycle that other agencies have been in where rates lower revenues to the point where you can't make it all pencil out?
Right. We tried to been, trying to be very, you know, one thing at a time because each change you make has a ramification. But I don't want there to be any confusion out there with the community. Conservation is our number-one priority financially. We'll figure out how to make it pencil out. And certainly, we share the concerns with rates. We do believe the 40% conservation has a lot to do with what I would consider normal May temperatures, normal June temperatures, where we get our fog. We haven't seen that for four or five years now, a welcome sight. If I can't get rain, I always say, I'll take the fog. It's perfect, you know, because it does cut down on the evaporation and demand for water. So, I'll take what we can get. And right now, we really do need this conservation to get us through that peak, that peak summer demand time. So, I'm welcoming it, welcoming this.
So, if this were to continue and we got in that revenue problem, the strategy would be to tap the brakes on capital expenses like the water main replacement project or something like that? Is that the?
We'll bring back a whole bunch of options to take a look at. We're very fortunate, and then it looks like we're going to end this fiscal year with our reserves at policy. So, that gives us some freedom. And the rate structure has been designed to use about 5 million of reserves. But we're very fortunate to be this far into the drought and have reserves in as good a shape as they are. And that's been, you know, a lot of good planning, a lot of good discussions about what is really important right now. And we've cut back on a lot of our expenditures to make this, to make that happen, so.
Thank you. And, Mr. Hagmark, wouldn't the deal with Montecito, that would help the city financially the following year? Would that, is that the case or is that?
The way that it, that agreement is playing out, I mean, they'll be paying the city over 20 years. So, it's, in a long range, it would be, it's going to, it would be a helpful partnership for both them and us. In the short term, it's still too speculative to know what benefits, significant benefits there'd be in that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, I don't see any other lights on for questions. So, thank you very much for that. Obviously, you, the water agency team is doing an amazing job. And thank you for your extra efforts. And certainly, for those who haven't looked at that Urban Water Management Plan, I guess it's coming back to council soon. It's, actually, its introduction is a very good document for sort of bringing everything together. And as Mr. Hagmark said, it's a good snapshot. All right. Well, that, we'll move on then to council and staff communications. Mr. Ojcas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along with the other mayor and Mr. Hart, I was at the inaugural flight from, coming in from Dallas. So, I think we now have 11 cities that we fly to. There were 70 passengers going one way and 50 going the other. Some of the people were really shocked. They got off the plane and there was the mayor greeting them, you know. I sort of pretended, oh, we do this all the time. Don't worry. Anyway, it was all good news.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Well, then, let's move on then to...